It was more than I allocated, but.
I don't have to abstain from anything today.
Northern?
No, no.
Northern?
Call this meeting to order. Jordan, would you start us off with a roll call?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Foelberg.
Present.
Leebild.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson. E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norvstrup. Mayor Shoneman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business will be to approve this week's agenda. I take a motion from the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Leebild. Second, E. Conger. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We've got three items within our minutes. The first one is the regular meeting minutes of September 2nd. We had a special city council meeting to discuss two-way main on September 8th. We'll accept those minutes as well. And then finally, there was some errors made to the September 2nd amended for some payroll updates. I would take a motion to approve this week's minutes.
Motion to approve or second?
I've got a motion, E. Conger. Second, Foelberg. Not this week's minutes, those minutes that I had mentioned, I guess.
Motion Nielsen.
Oh, motion Nielsen. Second, Foelberg. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have an open forum speaker joining us here today. It is Dawn Shepherd, and she'd like to talk a little bit about meeting, online meeting accessibility. Dawn, you know the routine, and there is a green light on the little microphone back there.
Yes, Dawn Shepherd, Aberdeen. I know that a lot of people can't make it to these meetings, and most of the time they're available on TV live, but the last several weeks I've had people telling me either it's blank, they can't see it at all, nothing happens, or the sound has been really bad, or one time it was actually the meeting from a previous week. And so then they, and I also have been trying to review it online on the or the city council website, and I've noticed it takes, well, like, last week's meeting still isn't on there. And so I think it would really be beneficial for both the city council and the public to be able to have access to it sooner after a meeting, so they could prepare maybe for the next one, or the city council could go back and listen to speakers and what they had to say about certain subjects before the next meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I don't know if the city council uses that as much as the public does, but I think it would be beneficial and helpful for everybody if that issue could be addressed, both TV and online. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
And we don't usually respond to this, but Jordan, since we did just very recently make some improvements to that system, would you talk to us for just a moment about the impact of the upgrades that we had made?
Absolutely. So the upgrades that we made related to our PEG agreement improved the way that Zoom interfaces with the recording. So not only can the remote participants see what's occurring, but they can, we can also record that content, so that was the big change. But I would also comment that our videos are posted typically the next day on the YouTube channel shortly after we copy that link into our Agenda Center. Whether or not the link is posted into our Agenda Center, we'll have to verify that. But the special meetings typically are not reported, so that is the process that we've been following within this office, or within my office.
And about how long from the time that a meeting occurs to the time that it exists within the Agenda Center?
That would be a copying link, so typically within a day or two.
Okay, thank you. So the lapse here was primarily because it's not been protocolled to shoot and record special city council meetings?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. We have a consent calendar that consists of five routine city business items. One of them is a proclamation. There will be a rededication of HP Gerber Education Building, which will take place on September 19th. I will be present to read that proclamation at that point, so I won't trouble you guys with that, since it doesn't look like anyone is from Northern to accept that. So if you're able to make it on Friday, please come and be part of the NSU homecoming celebration. I would take a motion to approve our consent calendar items.
Move to approve.
Motion, Ward. Second, E. Conger. Anyone have anything to speak to as it relates to those items on the consent calendar? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. First order of business in our old business will be a possible first reading of an ordinance 250901. That is the 2026 appropriations ordinance. That is the budget. It does not speak to Main Street. It does not speak to the capital improvement plan. That will be a second item here today, so keeping that in mind. Jordan, you want to walk us through? City manager and finance officer, Jordan, I'll kick it off with you.
Sure. So this budget is the same budget that was distributed back in August to the city council. There's one slight change related to expenditures for Moccasin Creek. We had misclassified transfer in and the transfer out, but by and large, this is the same document that was distributed within our agenda. It was made available at the library and at City Hall. It's been on our website. We've held public hearings. And this is the budget without amendment that was presented last, at our last meeting on September 2nd. There are various exhibits within the budget, but the ordinance that you're looking at literally today is a form as prescribed by state law. It doesn't provide much detail, but it's the form that we have to submit. So it's a lot to look at, but our budget book does a very good job of breaking down the general fund in particular. Again, this is a process that started back in April. We take input from departments. We craft a budget that is balanced and tries to accomplish the objectives of the council. Robin, would you like to weigh in here as well?
The only thing that I would say is that we've talked about this at a few different meetings. You've seen the had the discussion about whether or not government is growing and the changes that you've seen, the highs and lows. By and large, our general fund has not done a lot of adjustments with the exception of what happens with your capital projects typically within the airport, because that is a capital, or is not really in the capital side, it's on the general fund side is how it's classified. So that's been your big fluctuation. This budget does anticipate following through with the raises as recommended by our previous Condory study from a year ago. And as Jordan said, the majority of this was things that you have discussed and debated in the past few meetings. That's all I have.
Move to approve.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronane, a second from Councilman Norvstrup. Any final words on this or input? Speaker from the audience, Adam Altman. He's an attorney here in town, used to be a little bit more connected directly with the city, but now we watch him from afar. Adam, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bob Zine and city staff. I'm here in my capacity as the chair of the Board of Directors of CASA, the court-appointed special advocates for the Fifth Circuit. And I'm here because I understand that there is an appropriation for CASA in the budget, and I want to thank you. I know that that isn't what you always hear from the public at these meetings, but it means a lot to us. We're a relatively young and newly reformatted program. Allocation from the city in that amount means a lot. It means a lot to a young organization, a nonprofit, that helps the youth in the community who are in foster care. And I was here just primarily to say thanks, but I am available to answer questions. Our executive director, Gloria Hudson, is also here. She is formerly an employee of Lutheran Social Services and has been a really fantastic executive director, helping get the program started. If there's any questions from the council or staff, I'm happy to answer them. But mostly, we just really appreciate the generosity.
I do have a small update, since Travis had attended our first swearing-in ceremony with our first eight volunteers. We are now up to 12 volunteers serving 14 children that wouldn't otherwise have an advocate, and the age range is six months to 17 years. We are now serving children that can't speak for themselves and that at one point had to stay in JDC because there was no place for them to go. And being able to advocate for their needs transitioning into adulthood. So I really appreciate this very big I can't think of the word to say, but this is a really big deal to us, and it's going to allow us to continue. Last I checked, there's about 116 kids that are in pending child abuse neglect cases in the Fifth Circuit. Don't quote me on that, because that could have changed, and it's been a while. While 14 is a pretty substantial number of us serving, you know, there's still a lot of work that we plan on doing, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
A compliment or a praise for you guys. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do, giving kids, you know, a voice in the courtroom. If you guys wouldn't mind, I'd love to hear maybe just a little snippet on more on what you guys do to serve, because it is incredible work, and just want to highlight that a little bit more.
So essentially, what the Fifth Circuit Court Appointed Special Advocates is, is we take volunteers from the community, we interview them, we put them through a background check and a central registry check, and then they go through 30 hours of training, learning various different components of legalities, the different court hearings, the process. You learn a lot about ICWA, because we do have a lot of ICWA cases, which is Indian Child Welfare Act involving Native American families. And essentially, after they complete the 30 hours of training, they are sworn in as an officer of the court. And then when the judge appoints CASA to a case, then that child is appointed CASA. The CASA is for the child. There is sometimes some confusion on, you know, if we're DSS or anything like that, and we are not. Obviously, we have like a collaborative relationship with state's attorney and DSS, but we are a nonprofit, independent program that is specifically for that child. We spend one-on-one time with them. We attend IEP meetings, court hearings, any important appointments or, you know, anything like that, and we also meet the important people in their life. And then after spending some time, we don't rush to give a judgment or a recommendation just because we really want to be authentic with what we feel is best for that child. So we spend time getting to know them, and then we'll make recommendations to the court. Sometimes that has to do with placement, sometimes that has to do with cultural needs, educational needs, or what's important to or for that child. And essentially, that is, that's who we are. We are the child's voice in the courtroom.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. Appreciate that explanation, and it's nice to hear that some of the money that leaves City Hall makes a positive impact in the community. So good to be making a positive impact for those kids that could use an opportunity for a leg up. All right, we've got a motion, our second. Any other questions about the budget appropriations itself? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on our first reading?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foelberg.
Aye.
Leebild.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson. E. Conger.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Gloria, Adam, thanks for joining us tonight. It was good to hear from you. Next, we've got new business. The first item is a public hearing on the 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. Now, this is one that will include the Main Street project, and we want to be sure to be opening our ears and and attention to anyone that has input on anything to do with the capital improvement plan, so that we'll start with an open public hearing. This is the time or place for that hearing, and so if anyone would like to speak, now is your opportunity.
I'm glad the young lady spoke first, because I'm not used to the routine here. I walked in here and I looked around and thought, I can't talk at a place that looks like this. I'm getting out of here, way too scared. I'll usually use my outside voice, so I hope you can hear me, even though I'm by a mic. My name is Jim Fisher. I grew up in Eureka. My wife and I met at Northern in the late 60s. Then we were gone for a few years. In 1986, we moved back here with our family of two young boys. We've been in Aberdeen ever since. And I'm here to talk about the street. Both Kay and I were familiar in Aberdeen when it switched to Main Street to going one way. And that was about 50 years ago, and it's interesting that now we're going the other way. And I have just a couple of concerns. I don't have a real dog in this, in this race, or a horse in this race, but I'm concerned about a couple of things that I don't know if you've already considered them. Tell me to shut up and sit down, that's fine, but I just thought a couple of things. Number one, first of all, I haven't heard anybody really talk about are there any safety issues with making this change? I don't know what the reasons were for moving away from it 50 years. I'm a little too young for that. But what I'm concerned about probably the most part as I looked at this was if I looked out at the 500 block, and I see that you're going to take away the parking, or most of it, on the west side of the 500 block to make a right turn lane. If I'm wrong on this, tell me. But if you're going to make a right turn, what I'd like you to at least consider is that I drove by, walked by, I did a little bit of walking around town this morning to the downtown area, because I thought I might come here. Didn't know if I'd have the nerve, but thought I'll give it a shot. Those, the front of the businesses, there isn't more, at the most, there's seven feet to the street. So you're going to have a turning lane there. I don't know how far you're going to go north. I imagine that's under those options that are available. If you have a turning lane there, that means that right now where parked cars are kind of a buffer between where people are walking on the sidewalk, there is no more buffer when you take that, the parking away. And you're going to have cars going probably, what, 15 miles an hour? Within inches of the end of that sidewalk, there's not much more than seven feet at the most, from what I can tell, between those stores that are in front, at the front of those stores and the street. And you can imagine somebody coming down there, the light turns yellow. Well, I'm going to speed up a little bit. I'm not going to sit through another traffic change. And all of a sudden, instead of going the speed limit, which may be 15, they're at 20, and a two-year-old kid could be two and a half feet away from them. I do not think that many of you have thought about that. If you do, I would love to hear your reasoning for that. I was at Disney World with my two-year-old once. He saw Pinocchio. I was holding onto him as tight as I could. He was gone, hollering Pinocchio as he ran. They are gone when they see something. Some mother is going to be on that street, and some kid is going to pull away from her, and they may end up going toward the street. They may end up tripping, and here's a 20 mile an hour car inches away from them. You don't want to face the voters in another election two years after that. That's just what they has to do with safety. I'm concerned about that. My grandchildren live in Texas, so that's not for me, but it's for, I think, some people in Aberdeen. One thing to consider. The other is, what you've been told from people, when I was on boards when I was young, school board, Chamber of Commerce board, hospital board, a couple of old timers told me something I've always listened to. They said, you're going to hear lots of advice from people. Listen to the advice, but verify. Okay, we've been told the business is going to increase. I believe totally that traffic is going to increase. Everybody wants to drag main on Saturday night, or maybe on Monday mornings now they drag main. People dragging main are going to have their fun, but they're not necessarily going to stop and buy something. Just increased traffic will not bring increased business. I think where you're going to hurt business, this is just my opinion. I used to own a store, but just my opinion is, if you're going to take away, it looks to me, from what I understand in the insider, between 24 and 27, or 24 and 29 parking spots, that's not going to increase business. When you have people going around the circle, now they can't drive down, and oh, I see a parking spot on the left side. Nobody's coming, I can pull over and park in that. When they're in the, you know, two ways, they have to stay on their side to park, okay? Now, if they go around once, oop, no cars. Go around two times, how many times are they going to go around the circle before they go east of town and do their parking out east? That's not going to help the downtown area at all. Decreasing up to almost 30 spots cannot help, I don't think. You know, I'm, this is, again, this is just my opinion. Let me talk about one more thing. Again, with this, listening to other people, from what I understand in the insider, somebody said, we're not going to have a problem, because nobody's going to be parking their big 18-wheelers on Main Street and just shutting down traffic for 20 minutes while they take products into a store, because we're going to move all the product, all the deliveries into the alley, right? You were told that, I think. Is that, is that true, or am I totally wrong on this? Weren't you told that deliveries would be made in the alleys?
Side streets and alleys, yeah.
That's what, anyway, that's what the insider reported. Well, I went and walked the alleys this morning. I haven't been in the alleys of Aberdeen for a long time. I drove the alleys of Aberdeen this morning, and three blocks are, I don't know, what's the word, vacated? There is no alley on three spots. Out of 12 spots, three aren't there. That's 25% of what you were told could be used for deliveries, can't be used for deliveries. I just want you to verify what people tell you here. Okay? That may or may not make a difference in your mind with the streets, but I think it's significant, especially if I had a had a business on one of those streets.
Thank you.
And especially if some business has vacated the alley behind them, because they've got 100 parking spots behind their business. Why are they so concerned that they might lose a few parking spots out in front? Or, and I don't really understand the idea that business going opposite directions is going to increase the ability to, you know, to bring more business out. Just, it sounds good, but I don't think it's true. Last thing, again, things you hear.
Real quick, Jim.
Pardon me?
I said, real quick, we've already made it through two of these little guys.
This is just my last thing. Very quick. Two months ago, it cost 1.4 million for this project. All of a sudden, you're told that it's only going to cost 200,000. That's not the real world. Just shifting money from here to here, or to here, or taking it out of this pocket, that's not making it $200,000 for the project. I'm an Aberdeen taxpayer. I'm a state taxpayer. If the state's going to pick up some of that, it still comes out of my pocket. Remember that again when you want to run for reelection. Just my ideas. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Was it, was it Mike that wanted to run after Pinocchio?
No, that was Scott.
John, all right.
He ran after him. He didn't just want to run after him.
That's good, that's good. Lively discussion. I would like to make mention that people have given considerable amount of consideration of safety and parking, and of course, cost is a, is a topic that we're all very interested in. Anybody else from the council or from the, from the audience itself that would like to weigh in on any part of the capital improvement plan or the Main Street component of it specifically? Ron wanted to chime in on some of the procedural aspect of the two-way main thing. He knew that it might be scrutinized, so he wanted to get out ahead of it and make sure that everything was as clear as possible.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Initially, I wanted to note for the people in the audience and who might watch this later that the special meeting last week that took a lot of testimony, a lot of comments from people, that will be considered by the council members as they, as they decide how to, how to rule on their, our vote on the capital improvement plan. But, but for our purposes, what we've tried to do is make it clear that we have two parts of the way government operates here, local government operates. One with the budget and the other with our capital improvement plan. We earlier approved the budget unanimously at first reading. That'll come up again on next Monday for second reading, and that hopefully will be approved unanimously again. Now, we'll be dealing next week with the capital improvement plan, which is what, where Main Street was mentioned. And for those of you who went online and have seen the budget, you'll see that in the second half of this document is the capital improvement plan. And my job as city attorney is to try to make sure that we don't gum up all of our capital improvement projects with one, with one issue that appears to be contentious. So what we are planning to do next week is introduce, present to the council for first reading and possible approval, two resolutions dealing with the capital improvement plan. The first resolution will deal with the bulk of the plan. And again, that has been non-controversial. I don't see any issues with that, and I assume that the council will vote strongly in support of that first resolution. There will be a second resolution, and that second resolution will carve off by itself the issue of the two-way Main Street. So the council will have discussion on that, and will ultimately decide whether to approve that resolution in whatever shape. And again, I see that conversation as being, as being the discussion and the debate amongst the council members. Not necessarily the public, because they've had the opportunity already to weigh in on that with tonight's public hearing, but the council will have an opportunity to talk about the Main Street in an up or down way, which is, number one, does the council support a two-way Main Street as a majority of the council or not? If, if in fact, a majority of the council does support a two-way Main Street, as you'll recall, last week, there were options that were presented. Which, which version of the Main Street are they supporting? There is a two-lane version, and then a three-lane that has a left turning lane. And so the council will be, will have an opportunity to address both those issues and decide as a majority if they support one of those options. And then, once they've reached that, then they'll make the final vote on the resolution itself. And I know that there has been some inquiries out there about possibly referring that, doing a referendum petition on that. And so we're going to try to make it as clear to the voters, if it gets to that, that here's exactly what they're voting on. They're voting on whether or not there will be a two-way Main Street, and if they're, and if the council does approve a two-way Main Street, they'll be voting on which option of the Main Street that is. So our goal here is to try to protect our appropriations and financing obligations, but at the same time, have a nice, clear resolution for the public to look at and decide if they want to ultimately have a vote on that, okay? So I think I've been working with Dawn Shepherd on that, and we've had some conversations. I would certainly be happy to have conversations with anybody else on that. But next week is when there will be the votes on the, on the capital improvement plan, the vote on the lion's share of it, and then the vote on the two-way Main Street issue.
No, he's going to do it next week. Thank you.
Thanks for that explanation. Ron, I appreciate you making that as clear to everyone as possible. Anyone else like to contribute any thoughts on the capital improvement plan?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead. Well, David, you're up.
Okay. So I haven't really said much, sitting here, and I, I haven't really said much, sitting here, and and I've, I've listened a long time, and 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 if you think I haven't, I have been. And if you know me, you know I'm thoughtful on things, and I don't rush into things. And, um, it was referenced earlier that this was one point four to one point six million. I don't remember, but it was a study, and four hundred thousand of that number, whatever it was, was a contingency, which was almost a third of the project. And I don't know if any government project has a third of, built into contingency, so I, I just wanna, like, put that out there. But, and there were considering a lot of other things, like if we hired things out. Um, and also, the project wasn't as clearly defined as it is now, and that's why the number actually went down, um, versus up, which normally we're used to things going up. But, and I know we're not gonna decide this, but I just feel like, I've talked to uh, some people a lot, um, at different times, and I, I feel like my job is to finally speak. Um, so that's what I'm doing, and I'm not, I'm still listening, so if you wanna catch me afterwards, you can. But, um, if we do the turning lane, which I am not supporting the turning lane, um, that, that would be around two hundred thousand, based on the budget, or the number we got last week. Um, if you include the state light, which I understand that that is also taxpayer money, um, it's state taxpayer money, which those are the same people. But, um, the state didn't necessarily have to say yes to that, um, but they did. Um, or at least, they've given the impression that they're gonna say yes to that, and that's three to four hundred thousand, based on the number we've given. So, that puts it somewhere in between six hundred, five hundred to six hundred thousand. A lot less than the one point four to one point six million. But if you don't do the turning lane, um, then the number that we got from Public Works is, it's less than two hundred thousand. How much less, I don't know, would it be one hundred ninety-nine thousand? Um, I don't know, or would it be a hundred fifty thousand? That's a possibility. A lot of our city employees, um, can do the work, so that helps. And, yeah, they, they're busy and they have a lot to do, but, um, I think they can squeeze this part of it into their routine, um, if that's what the council decides. And if you go without the turning lane option, uh, very few spots are are eliminated. I don't remember if it's one per block or one per side, but it's very few spots would be eliminated. And so, I have listened to Brent and Wayne and and Domino's, and that's why I don't think take, doing the turning lane makes sense. Um, because I agree with you that your parking is valuable. And, um, I, I've researched and listened to the people that are pushing it, and I, I've seen Chattanooga i- is one, I can specifically say I saw research, which I know Chattanooga and Aberdeen are not the same, but there's other cities that have, um, done this, and their, their sales have gone up, which is, um, a little hard to put, um, a hard number to, because I doubt very many business owners are gonna be like, hey, this is my sales. Um, and and also, there's a million factors if you run a business, so it, you can't say it was just because you reversed the street to two-way. But, a lot of the places that went from one way to two-way, their sales went up, or, and generate more tax money. And then, that increases property values, and there's millions of factors why property values would go up. Um, pedestrians have gone, um, traffic has gone up. Um, accidents have actually gone down, um, based on the cities that I looked at. Um, and so, I think it, it's safe. It do, it does address the concern where you have, you still have the parked cars in between the sidewalk and the cars going, uh, um, beside it. Um, so, I think the things that you want to see go up in a change, and the things that you want to go down, like increasing safety, less accidents, in other cities, it actually went down. Um, I did talk, somebody told me I need to talk to Watertown, I talked to Watertown. I actually talked to the mayor of Watertown, I was in the legislature with him, and he had very positive things to say about it, um, when they switch it. He wasn't mayor when they made the switch, but he's been involved in politics a long time, so he, and he's lived in Watertown a long time, so I, I'm sure if it was, um, people were really opposed to it, and it was a disaster, he would be hearing about it as mayor. Um, and as far as I know, I, I don't think anybody's reversed, uh, back to one way. But, the other thing, and I haven't been able to confirm this with Stu, um, yet, but I kinda, I'm putting him on the spot, but is, I've heard some people say, in five to ten years, we might have to redo Main Street, like, um, it, the infrastructure needs to be updated, and maybe it's ten years, I don't know. But this is a chance to do it for a very low cost, basically repainting lines. Um, it's not quite that simple, because you have to reconfigure the radiuses at Sixth and Main, and, um, and part of the, the light discussion is they're doing the da, the state is doing the adaptive lighting system on Sixth Avenue. And could they do that with the current light? Maybe, but, um, could they, uh, would it make it easier to do that system, um, with a new light? Uh, probably, because it's newer technology, but, um, so I don't think that's, that light is totally a hundred percent because of us. Um, but, um, but would it be done without the two-way Main Street? I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I'm not in the state's shoes, so I, I don't know. Um, but I think they, they feed off of each other to get to that point where that's what has, is recommended. Um, and Stu can definitely correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but, um, and some, some comments, and I think this is my last point, is like, why don't we spend it on something else? Um, I, I know some people say we should increase, uh, the height of manhole covers, because we're hitting a lot of those, that's part of the budget that we're talking about. Um, we talked about it when the budget was, uh, uh, communicated to the council members by the city manager, um, that that's part of what we're gonna do. Um, and and we have a ton of priorities that some of you might not care about, and some people care a lot about, and we're trying to balance all those needs. And, I mean, it's not even, that two hundred thousand, and I'm going with higher number, isn't even close to one percent of the budget. Is it significant, is it important to understand where two hundred thousand dollars is? For sure, it's all taxpayer money. Um, but we're, we're not, we're not ignoring you, we're not trying to ram this through. Um, at least I'm not, I, I'm, I'm listening, I'm trying to balance the needs and the concerns of everybody involved. Um, at the end of the day, are you gonna be happy with the decision I make? Um, maybe not, but at least, I hope, everything I just went through, and if you wanna talk to me afterwards, you can. Um, um, hopefully, you at least understand where I'm, what I'm thinking, and 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 I, I'm not just rash, like, rushing through this decision and 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 just trying to shove it down somebody's throat, because I, that's not what I'm doing. And I don't believe anybody on the council is, is trying to do that. Um, they, they can speak for this, themselves next week, or if they want, if I kinda open the gates, they can do it this week. But, um, I, I think we all care about the community, and we're trying to find the best thing for the community. And and do we have different versions how to get there? Yeah, we do, but we, we all care about Aberdeen, and we want it to be the best city in South Dakota. And 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 this, I think this is one way to make Aberdeen better. Um, and and time will tell if we do make that decision, if it, if it's a good decision or not. And, sorry, I had, I wa, I thought of one more thing that somebody brought up last week, and I totally agree with him, and, um, and this isn't a decision for today, but the houses by Wiley Park, um, the road from those houses, the new houses to Wiley Park, I totally think that we should have a bike trail, and we've talked about from Holgate North of Fairgrounds, that that should be done, and that's part of the capital plan next year. So, we have been listening, and sometimes it takes a while for those things to get in the capital improvement plan. But, uh, hopefully, in the next, whatever, how many years, um, we can do something with that road. And now that I'm saying this out loud, I don't even know if that's a city or county road, which I would complicate things if it was a county road. But, we, we have a process that we can work through that issue as well with the county, if that's the pros, i- if that is truly a county road. But, I think that's everything that I wanted to say. And hopefully, that helps at least understand where I'm at. And and I've had good discussions with some of you, and hopefully, we, um, continue to can, can have that conversation and respect each other and and, um, move forward, so.
Thank you, David. Uh, Robin, chime in on the question that he posed about the infrastructure replacement on Main Street. About when is that due?
Well, you wanna do it before things start failing, and the fact that it was done, I think a lot of that was done during that nineteen seventy-eight project, so a lot of that, we have seen some failures on the water side. Uh, I believe the sewer side was, uh, lined, so that is, depending on the technology they used back in nineteen seventy-eight, it's probably in okay shape, and we haven't had any problems with that. But I would say it's, it's gonna be within that next ten years anyway, that we'll see a need. If you take a look at this pavement structure, you know that, that the pavement is getting tired, and the fact that that's not in great shape anymore means that when you tear that up, you're gonna have, you're gonna wanna spend the money on the infrastructure underneath. Anyway, so it's, it's, uh, looming in the near future.
Thank you for chiming in on that. That road that you referred to is, in fact, a city road, and, um, and we have right away issues to contend with in order to do a bike trail in that stretch. I know that I've brought it up a time or two.
We're talking on Nineteenth Street, or are we talking on Dakota Street?
We're talking, I believe we're talking south of Storybook Land, where they.
The Ni- Nineteenth Street, and and that piece, that piece is ours. Um, uh, it's all ditches right now, so it would be probably the easiest time to do. Would be once, uh, that, that roadway is, is turned into a, a regular urban section versus the rural section we've got now. It's tough to put stuff into ditches, the ditches are narrow. Drainage would be messed up pretty bad if we stuck a, a bike path on it, but and it'd be really difficult to maintain afterwards, because what slopes you do have would be steeper, so.
No, I appreciate that, Ron.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman.
Can I just add to, uh, what David was talking about, is that appropriate?
I think it is.
Okay.
Other speakers.
I should say, uh, Councilman Norshtop. Um, he, uh, made the good point that what I learned within probably three months of getting on city council three years ago now, is that every single member of this council wants the best for our community. We would not have run. There's not a lot of glory that comes from serving on city council. It's a, it's a servant leadership position, and and we all want the best for the community. And so, I hope that the community recognizes that, that we take our job seriously, and we do it not for ourselves, but for the community. To that end, I did grow up on, on Main Street, uh, not in Aberdeen, but in Brookings. My parents had shoe stores, and I worked at the shoe stores at the time, I was twelve. And when nobody comes into the shoe store, it affects how much money your family can spend at the grocery store. And, so it's from that retail background that I think about the families in our town that are investing their own income into opening stores on Main Street. And if we want the best for our community, we want those families to be successful in their businesses. How are they successful in their businesses? Well, some businesses are destination businesses, like Domino's, and like the Fisher Store. If I need a key, I know I'm going to a lock-and-key store, I'm not just gonna wander the town and look for one. If I need Domino's, I know I'm driving to Domino's, I'm not just gonna wander the town and happen upon a, a pizza place. But there's a lot of stores on Main Street that rely on foot traffic or car traffic. And that means we need traffic. If more people are walking downtown, if we have activities downtown, if there's more people driving downtown, then those businesses that need people to walk in off the street and buy shoes that day, that makes a big difference in their lives. And so, I think it's a both and. I think it's our responsibility, if we wanna serve our community, to serve both those who have destination businesses, and both those who have businesses that rely on foot traffic and street traffic. And we can do that, and the idea that, um, David shared here is to not vote for that turning lane, but just to flip that street from, um, going northbound to going southbound on the west side. If we do that now, we can try it. We can see. And if we vote yes, and we're wrong, and traffic doesn't increase, and business doesn't increase, David and I can eat crow. But we also will know, we'll have tested it, we'll know whether it worked. And then, in five or ten years, when the city has to invest a colossal amount of money on replacing all of the pavement, and the infrastructure underneath, we'll know, do we want it to be two-way permanent for the next forty years? Did our experiment work? Or should we go back to one way, and you all were right? Is it really going to hurt it to try? And when you think about our community, and you think about the betterment of our community, we need a vibrant downtown where people are coming to live, to work, to shop. I understand the pragmatic part of delivering goods to stores and building new buildings. Yes, there's always going to be problems, um, if we, if we have businesses that need deliveries. I mean, I drive down Sixth Avenue every day, and sometimes I watch that truck back up at Kessler's, and I don't know how they do that, right? Um, and so, there's things like that happening everywhere in our town. And I just would like everybody to give us the benefit of the doubt that we are hearing you. I've had, like David, multiple meetings with people and listened to you, and we are hearing you. Um, and I just hope we can have a constructive conversation in our community, 'cause the divisiveness in our national politics is not healthy, and our community needs to talk to each other and hear each other out. And I, and I think we can come to solutions that are collaborative when we do that, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else from the council have anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just, uh, wanna echo what, uh, uh, Councilman Fulberg and Councilman Novstrep said. Um, it's a difficult decision, you know, to be honest. We've been, been doing a lot of talking, I think all of us, and I've talked with a lot of you guys as well in the room about, uh, as, as I, you know, research and make up, you know, the opinion, which it's, it's, it's a, it's a difficult one. At the same time, it is, uh, you know, I feel like it is an affordable solution to take a look at an investment into our downtown that, that we can potentially revert if it, if it doesn't work. Now, I do believe it's gonna be successful, I believe it is gonna improve safety. I believe it will help improve, uh, property values, as well as hopefully over, you know, help retail businesses as well. Um, I'm gonna support two-way main, and I, and I did reach out to the people most affected by that, as, as, you know, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Dubal from Domino's could, could attest to. And those are tough conversations, but, you know, you guys came to me and asked me about my thoughts, and I wanted to come back to you guys when I, when I had those thoughts kinda closed out. Um, as an example, I don't, I won't repeat any, anymore, 'cause I think you guys did a great job. But I do just wanna highlight, just using stats, using data, uh, gotta be careful how I say this. But I was just, right before I came to the council, we had a call at my employer, wondering how we can help them, because they wanna bring in a business to town. It's a retail business, fill one of those Main Street buildings that's currently empty, but they're having a really big trouble because of traffic counts. And so, we're gonna help to see what we can do, tell other stories about Aberdeen, but there's a simple way right there, is, I believe it's seven hundred and fifty more cars may come downtown Main Street on this change. I don't know if I necessarily want seven hundred and fifty cars to come down additional main, but I want the cars that are gonna stop into Brent Store, into Domino's, into Three Twenty-two, into Roma's. I want those people coming. When I'm coming home from soccer practice on the south end of town, and I live on North Main, I don't want me using Main Street as a thoroughfare. I maybe, I think it was said on a last week or a previous week, that maybe there's sometimes people that go a little bit more than fifteen miles per hour, because it's two-lane, and because when there's someone pulling in or backing out, maybe I'm guilty of doing that too. Take, maybe switch lanes real quick while, while someone's turning in, and not doing the safe approach. I believe having two-way, it'll force us to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be avoiding Main Street when I'm just traveling from soccer practice back home. Hey, when I wanna go downtown, I'll go downtown, I'll seek out a restaurant. And parking, I, I, I feel like that's, uh, that's another issue altogether, and I think it's pretty reasonable on, on what we're doing for the, the remaining blocks, one or two parking spots, I believe, other than the five hundred block, which we'll have to make a decision on that, but. Um, I think there is a lot of parking, there are parking garages. There is, uh, parking within two blocks on almost everywhere available, but maybe we need to do a better job at signage. I think maybe that was pointed out by Ms. Shepherd at a previous meeting. Maybe we do need to look at some of the placemaking, and ensure that when people are coming to town for the first time, they understand that there is free public parking, and actually, a good amount of it. So, I do appreciate you guys for coming, um, So, I do appreciate you guys for coming, um, and I just wanna, you know, recommend, I encourage other counselors to call other, other cities, call Watertown, call Sioux Falls. Let's call places, places outside of South Dakota that have made these changes. Having those conversations, just talking about data and facts, I think it is eye-opening. And so that's why I'm gonna support it, uh, is because of, of those conversations. And there are a lot of other people, uh, especially I'd say maybe the, the under, under forty range that really, really are supportive of it. Maybe they're not as active and involved like you guys and I would encourage them to get active, involved in their community as well and be verbal about it. And I thank you guys for saying that, for, for being that. Thank you.
Jim.
Is it possible for me to ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just didn't respond to this over. I'm, I'm not on the council, I'm sat here through the hours of feedback. So, this is just my quick observation on this, just a couple of quick things. Um, yeah, I hear that traffic will increase. We will have more money, we will make more money. A lot of that seems to me, unless I'm just not aware, is a lot of stuff, well, somebody says we'll have more because Watertown did this. Studies are really, you really have to study who paid for it. You have to know who paid for a study lots of times. They actually wonder if your, your internet, if, if they give you good information. If a, if a boss said doesn't wanna pay his, his employees more, hire somebody to do an employee study, I can tell you what it's gonna say about that. If the employees put together a fund to hire a study and they pay for the study, I can tell you what that's gonna say.
Do you have a question?
Well, just wait, I'll finish you now. The question is for fifty years. I don't know, I haven't been here all those fifty, but I think some businesses in Aberdeen have really done well over a fifty-year history. And your question that, well, we tried this one or two years and it doesn't work, we'll go back. And you say, what does it hurt? It hurts one point four million dollars to those of us who are taxpayers and you're a taxpayer too. It's not just something that we do overnight, like changing our underwear. You know, it's, it's, if you do it and then almost switch back, just say, I'm sure people have wanted to switch back, but they haven't done it for fifty years. So, I, I think just be careful on listening where the studies come from. Who did the study? Aberdeen is not Watertown. Watertown is a way different regional pattern and everything because of the interstate and because of where they're located. We have way different, uh, if there, you can't just compare, you can't compare originally Aberdeen, you can't compare what we say.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Somebody says, well, this is the study that we took. You just think about it.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good point. And I will say anecdotally, um, because people have asked me even before the study was done, do you think it would increase traffic? And I will leave you with this, that the traffic amounts south of the one-way section of the street and north of the one-way section are literally two times what they are on that one-way section. So, opening it up to through traffic is certainly going to increase traffic. I mean, it wouldn't take a rocket scientist to put that, that together just anecdotally. However, um, it is a tough issue. There's people affected on both sides. Downtown is something the city strongly wants to improve. Because somebody made a decision forty-seven years ago or forty-five years ago or whatever, doesn't mean that's, that they had the all-knowing insight on the impact of it. And the fact that it hasn't been changed back doesn't mean that it shouldn't have been changed back. There's a lot of factors to consider and I think that everyone in the council will consider. And I know that there's people that are kind of gravitating both ways. So, it'll be another interesting meeting here next week. But we do genuinely impre- uh, appreciate your input onto this topic, Jim. And for the rest of you that have shared previously, definitely taking those things into consideration too.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I thought I'd given Jim the last word. All right, fine.
I was just gonna let Jim know that Aberdeen's a T-town. So, it's, it's a T-town. It's not an interstate town. It's a railroad town. And railroad towns have different shapes. Aberdeen's a T-town. The railroad and the Main Street are a T and they're designed to be two-way main streets. Thanks. Two-way main streets, that's the way they were designed.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. Before I was born, if you could only go back. Yeah, actually, if you go down Watertown, there's a, there's a railroad and an old, they've got a visitor center built from an old depot that's beautiful right in their downtown area too. So, they were kind of built at an angle because of the, the direction that their railroad traveled through that community. So, probably more alike than we are disalike, to be entirely honest. But with that, we will close this public hearing formally. It is closed. Moving on to the next item, the next item is a possible approval of a resolution. This resolution approves the allocation of promotional fund dollars to various community organizations for the upcoming year, twenty twenty-six. Members of the council weighed in with their preferences of the applicants in terms of dollars and cents and those numbers were carefully evaluated and averaged and mediated and all those good things. Robin, would you walk us through what we'll be voting on here tonight?
So, as you said, we, we had the, uh, different requests. I think, uh, a lot of you spent a lot of time deliberating based on what those requests asked for and how they, you know, how they feel, uh, they will impact the community. And that's, that's what the promotion fund is typically considered for is, are they gonna bring, uh, people to town and, and, uh, spend time with us in Aberdeen? Um, bottom line is that, uh, there were some allocations that, that, uh, were, I would say, well below the, the allocations that, uh, the council weighed in on, were well below their requests. Uh, and in addition to that, we do have about fifty-five thousand dollars that is unallocated at this point that I guess you could, you consider to be used as a rainy day fund for future requests. And we do end up with requests every year after the fact. Uh, an opportunity, I, I think one of the most recent ones that I recall was the BMX track. They're bringing in a regional meeting and, uh, it, uh, brought in thousands of people to the community and, and, uh, you would, after the fact, uh, after the promotion fund had been, uh, allocated, you came up with the additional cash to help them out, make some improvements so they could hold that meet. So, I guess it would be prudent in my mind to have a little bit of money left on hand just in case. Uh, the allocations as presented are based on the median and/or the average. If the average and median was significantly different, we did look at trying to adjust those. Uh, there were a couple of them where the council was, uh, obviously not, uh, there, there were a lot of differing opinions on where that should be and so we went with the median on at least one of those based on that, that case. But you have the resolution in front of you with the proposed, uh, allocations and I guess I'll leave it to the council to decide, uh, if they want to amend or move forward with it as, as, uh, proposed.
And also I'd like, um, just for a moment for Jordan to chime in. Jordan, this is a much larger number than we had, um, allocated in the past. It's based upon projections. We're looking pretty good for twenty twenty-five. Would you say that's a fair assessment?
Excuse me, yes, Mayor. Uh, I'm confident with the budgeted figure that was used to present, uh, or within the budget and allocated here within.
And our projection for twenty twenty-five stands to be a little stronger than what we had allocated for last year.
That's correct. Um, according to the resolution passed earlier this year that established a promotion fund reserve policy, um, based on the ending fund balance, it's possible that there could be additional cash available for a process defined as subsequent allocation in twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Motion from anyone in the council that would care to make-
Motion to approve the expenditure.
Motion E-Conger second. Norstrom. Um, any questions, any comments, any thoughts? It was good to see some new organizations, I think, maybe, uh, pop up. Go ahead, Chad.
Do we need to earmark that fifty-five thousand as a reserve?
It'll naturally-
Or just, it's just naturally in there?
Right. If we're short of the budgeted amount and we hit the budget, it'll just remain in that fund. Go ahead, David.
Uh, since we have, uh, larger audience than we have in the past, could Jordan maybe explain, and I'm putting you on the spot, but like what the promotions fund is and, and, um, and like how that money is collected, like what businesses pay into that?
Sure. Excuse me, sure. But the promotion fund is a tax-derived, um, on what's typically defined as bed, booze and board, triple B. Um, that's, that's what other communities call it. We call it the promotion fund. Um, it's a tax on, um, more, uh, goods than services that, um, people visiting our community might contribute to. Um, and we, as I described earlier, we have a pretty in-depth policy that describes the eligible uses. Um, that's available on our website. Also, within the agenda packet, there's a link to it. I recognize you can't see it now, but, um, we've done a good job of defining a process for distributing it. And, um, if there's additional funds, we have a method to disperse those as well. Um, I know the council is very interested in dispersing and not holding reserves. So, uh, I think we've built a, a very strong policy that takes care of that and addresses it when, um, when our receipts come in a little higher. Also, uh, we do have the provision for a slight reserve in a case where maybe we budget higher and, uh, some type of economic uncertainty or event happens where revenues don't meet our target. We wanna be able to fill, fulfill those obligations, so we do have a slight reserve for that purpose as well.
Thank you. There's no further questions. Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norstrom.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
E-Conger.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
I accept that educational impact campaign.
Councilmember Ronade.
Likewise, I would, uh, vote yes on everything except I would abstain on the educational impact allocation.
Mayor Shoneman.
Do we have to adjust the, the averages then? Are these guys putting in zero dollars or? I'm just kidding. I, motion carries. Next we-
We can get to put in a dollar amount on that one.
What's that?
There was no dollar amount to put in on that one.
I, um, we'll move along to the next one. Jokes aside, we've got possible approval of WRF improvements. It's a pay request number three. It's a million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred eighty dollars and it's made to PKG Contracting. Um, our wastewater treatment manager, Amanda Fisher, is here. Amanda, welcome. Thanks for being here. Can you tell us about this payment?
The payment is for, um, like you said, the third payment towards the general contractor on the project out there. Um, for the improvements, general conditions, middles for equipment, um, the final payment to, um, the Ramd Agri-up here company, um, trenching, excavation, piping. Um, some of those are proportional payments for work that's continued. Um, and, uh, like you said, rounding up to one point nine million. And it would be in total ten point three seven, I believe, ten point three seven million of the, the projects so far out of the ninety million budget for, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, Councilwoman Lee Belt, second, Councilman Ward. So, I went down there the other day on foot and tried to take some pictures, but there was a fence around, of course, the whole ground. So, I'll have to get-
Keep foot traffic out, yes.
Yeah, I'll have to get down there and take some pictures during regular working hours. But primarily earth-moving equipment, what was going at that time. What else have you been up to?
Well, right now, it is building out the aeration basins, so the open water chambers. We're extending that portion of it and currently, um, they're finishing up rebar and the large slab of cement will be poured next Wednesday. So, if you would like to see the work previously, um, up to that point, otherwise they'll be pouring the floor of the aeration basins and then moving rebar, um, building the walls out.
Next Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday.
Not the day after tomorrow, a week and a day and a-
Yeah, I believe like the twenty-something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got our motion, got our second. Any other questions for Ms. Fisher? Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Ronade.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
E-Conger.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Norstrom.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Another one for Amanda. We've got a possible approval of payments to the NICOG Northeast Council of Governments for ten thousand dollars. Amanda, they've been helping us out.
Correct. Um, they administer the funds for the Clean Water Act surface, um, revolving funds or state revolving funds. Um, and then they also administer the ARPA money that was granted to this city for this project, um, eighteen point nine million dollars. Um, they help with application for, um, the state, the SRF funds loan. So, all of the work and administration that they do for the project and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward. Second, Nielsen. Anyone have any questions on that payment to NICO? Jordan.
Councilmember Norstrom.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
E-Conger.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Ronade.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for joining us, Amanda. Next, we've got a possible approval of a pay request for four hundred thirty-one thousand five sixty-six and that is for our Tenth Avenue Bridge Replacement Project to prom construction out of Slaton, Minnesota. Stu, that project seems to be moving along.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, it's clipping right along. Um, the, I didn't get an update today. But, um, when I checked with them last week, they've got both buttments done. Um, they poured the bent caps, um, columns and the bases for the columns are all done. Um, they're working on riprap right now on the east side, I believe. And they'll continue to work on false work to get ready to pour the bridge deck, which will be happening here in a couple of weeks, probably. So, progress is, it's, it's changing rapidly down there, which is really nice to see.
Thank you for that explanation. Stu, would someone from the council care to make a motion to get these guys paid up to date?
Moved.
Second. Motion, Ronade. Second, Norstrom. Any questions for City Engineer Stu Nelson as it relates to the bridge project or this payment? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ronade.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
E-Conger.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Norstrom.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval of a payment to Helms and Associates for the following invoices. There's three of them, uh, precondition air unit, that's twenty, or two thousand fifty-five dollars. We've got, um, rehabilitation and lighting improvements, sixty-three dollars. And finally, airport terminal expansion invoice of a thousand dollars. Bidding services is complete and invoice seven for fifteen hundred ninety-one dollars for the construction admin projects. Um, Helm's just trying to make sure that the check printing machine around here still works for the big ones that they send us frequently. Rich, what have you got with these three?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the, uh, item number F-one, um, the precondition air unit, um, that is, um, a veil project that we had, uh, talked about on June seventeenth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, this payment is to help the associates for their assistance in helping me put together, um, that grant request. Um, that is gonna be a ninety-five federal, two and a half percent state and two and a half percent city, uh, contribution. Also, I learned some good news today in that, uh, is we should see that grant offer by September eighteenth. So, it's around the corner here. Um, item number F-two, uh, invoice twenty-seven, um, is for, uh, Helm's, uh, folks, um, assistance on, uh, runway one-three-three-one lighting improvements. And that is invoice number twenty-seven for the amount of sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Um, again, that funding allocation, so that project is ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent local. And, um, I had checked with our, um, contractor to see if he had heard anything back from, uh, Airport Lighting Company. And, uh, it looks like by October seventeenth, they will be sending us all brand-new lighting to replace on that runway. So, hence the positive movement there. Um, item F-three is, uh, AIG, AIP project fifty-five and fifty-six. That's the terminal expansion, uh, project that we're planning. Um, invoice number six is for the amount of one thousand eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And that is for, uh, bidding services that, uh, Helm's assisted us with and that is one hundred percent complete. assisted us with, and that is 100% complete. And invoice number seven, in the amount of $1,591.17, is for construction, administration, services. And funding sources for that project were state, their Senate 144 obligated $1.2 million and AIP at $800,000. Our local share for the terminal expansion is projected to be about $60,000. And we'll be starting that project April 1st of next year.
Move to approve items F1, F2, and F3?
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Councilwoman Foeburg. Any questions for Transportation Director Crokel? Go ahead, David.
I, July 1, I got to be liaison to the Airport Board. And I know that Aberdeen Insider covered this, but it, and I could say this about any of these upcoming things, but I think it's really important for the full council if they miss that article, that since 2012, the airport has done $46 million worth of projects, and city taxpayers have only spent one point, a little over 1.7 million, which is huge because Aberdeen Airport is very, very important to not just Aberdeen, but the whole northeast part of the state. And like we talked about earlier, it's all taxpayer money. But like, that's huge to make Aberdeen a very vibrant and competitive city. And I know Senator Perry could talk about this too for a long time, but I mean, that leadership goes to the Airport Board and definitely more than anybody rich, because that's his, his job. And that's, that's amazing to get that amount of money from grants. So we haven't talked about that as a council, but I know if Allen was here, he would echo those comments or add to it since he's been the liaison longer. But that's a big deal for Aberdeen, and we need to keep the airport going in the direction that it's been going, so.
Thank you for that. David? Anyone else have anything before we take a vote on these first three payments? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of payments for our apron reconstruction project, which is titled Phase Two. We've got one for $72,973.88. That one's to Helm's. And secondarily, to REED construction for materials and work completed through August 23rd, $1.32 million. Now we're getting to the big ones. Rich?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So item G covers specifically the general aviation reconstruction project, Phase Two. The project is completed. We, we're going to be doing a punch list walkthrough. Actually, we did a punch list walkthrough last Friday, and then we are going to leave this back on the 24th, just to make sure everything was, was completed. But item G1, again, this is for AIP project 52, 2024. Invoice 21 in the amount of $72,973.88 is for administration and resident engineering services throughout the project. Item G2 for reading construction pass, number four, is for materials and work completed through October, or pardon me, August 23rd. And that was in the amount of $1,320,890.34. Funding allocation for this project was 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% local.
Thank you, Rich. Would someone from the council care to make a motion on making those two payments, REED and Helm's?
Second.
Motion, E. Conger, second, Ward. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question for Rich, but not about this specifically.
All right, let's. Rich, August 23rd is the cutoff date for this. Was there a fair bit of instruction that's occurred since that date on this apron project?
Yeah, you'll, you'll be seeing another pay request and then pay it. There, there will be another change order for quantity adjustments.
Okay. Aaron, what was your question?
Rich, could you give us an update on when we have three flights? It looks like that Fesner opener weekend, we might have three flights right around for a week or so there. Is that accurate?
I, I am not prepared to answer on that, Counselor. I, I will have to go back and check. I did not receive any notification from SkyWest that they were reinstating that third flight.
Thank you. Considering, maybe shoot us an email when you find out, Rich, if you would be so kind. Jordan, would you give us?
I will do that.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Ronane?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye. Motion carries. Possible approval to pay request for our AIP/AIG project, Terminal Access Road and Terminal Parking Lot. The first of the three is Helm's and Associates, $11,497 for resident engineering. The second is $191,649 to DAMI Construction. That's work completed through that August 23rd. And then a decrease of $23,808 for extended contract time extension period that they must have overshot a bit there for DAMI on that. Rich, how's that project coming along?
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor. So item H deals specifically with Terminal Access Road. That's got two AIP numbers, you'll notice, AIP 53 and 54. And that is because the grant was divided into AIP money and AIG money. So item H1, invoice number six to Helm's and Associates for construction, administration, resident engineering services for $11,497.79. Item H2 is pay estimate number one, the DAMI construction for work completed through August 23rd. And that equals a total amount of 190, 191,649.31. And item H3 is a change order, number one, the DAMI construction was a decrease of $23,808.90. And also, we're looking at a contract time extension of 40, 40 calendar days for each phase of the work. The decrease of $23,808.90 was, or is for the deduction of the prime coat. The prime coat is what they put down between completed subbase and the first lift of asphalt. The time between the preparation of the subbase and the first, the application of first lift was very short, so it didn't set out in the rain, wasn't exposed to too much weather. So they were able to put down that first lift within days of finishing up the subbase work on that. The contract time extension of 40 calendar days is really due to the late timing of the grant money being awarded to us. We were, we were all kind of, had our fingers crossed that we were going to see that grant money May 1st. So, and as you know, it didn't come until mid-July. So by the time we got, the contractors all on board and they started, their job was early August. So unfortunately for that, the job is going to run into hunting season. We're looking at probably the end of November. The Terminal Access Road has been completed from the Highway 12 entrance up to the front of the terminal, right, right about by the airport conference room. So they've been working on the rest of that today. What they did was they cut out the, the crosswalk coming from parking lot to the terminal and were directing traffic across into the terminal on the new asphalt that was put down last Friday. Yeah, there's, there's, there's still quite a bit of work left to be done, the parking lot. So this next phase of the project will be what we're referring to as Phase Two, where it'll, it'll finish around the airport terminal road into the parking lot return and the, and the south half of the parking lot. So that'll be all, all new asphalt. And the subbase is, is pretty much ready to go. They're finishing some of the fine tuning of that. All of the concrete work with the driveover curbs, the expanded parking lot entrance, the park, the, the terminal return road, we had those widened out just a little bit to accommodate for the snow removal equipment. And we had a driveover curb put there as well. And along the entire front of the terminal, we had driver, or driveover curb went down. And that'll make it easier for us to get complete snow removal. It'll make it safer for the passengers, also not having to negotiate a four-inch highback curb, you know, if they step over, it'll be just a real smooth transition up onto the sidewalk. Funding allocations for this project, they are 95% federal, two and a half state, and two and a half city share.
Move to approve the three items in the AIP/AIG project.
Second. Got a motion from Councilwoman Lee Belt, second, Councilman Ward. Any questions? Jordan, would you give us our final roll call vote of the evening? No, second to last, I guess, we're going to do the bills.
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Foeburg?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye. Motion carries. Bills, I would take a motion to pay the bills. Thank you for joining us. Move to approve the bills. I've got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Knobstrup. Jordan, would you give us now the final roll call vote of evening?
Councilmember Ronane? Councilmember Foeburg?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
E. Conger?
Aye.
Nielsen?
I will abstain on the payment to Banner Associates and aye on the remainders.
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
I also will abstain, but we have enough votes to pay the bills this week. Robin, motion does carry. Robin, what have you got for the city managers' report?
We, we've been busy doing things with, with the budget, and we will now get into some additional conversations with some of the public on different things that have been kind of held off. So the next couple of weeks, we'll be trying to move things forward with some additional You will be asked, I'll, I'll be calling to see if you'll be able to meet with me for different meetings. I know Rich has one that, that we've got coming up. Bottom line is, as, as my time here gets closer, we're, we're going to have to try to button some things up. And we'll see how much more we can accomplish before, before I'm done. So I don't have any additional things for tonight. We didn't have any certificates of appreciation, which is highly unusual, but we will have some for next week. So look forward to letting you know about those coming up.
Thank you, Robin. That was the most nebulous city managers' report I think you've been a part of. So it leaves us all scratching our heads. We'll see what will come in the upcoming weeks. I take a motion to approve this meeting, or during this meeting. It's been a long one, my head. Second. Was that Nielsen? Motion, Nelson, second. Knobstrup, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Proposed name, motion carries. We are adjourned.